To talk about the budget forum and maybe kind of circle around and see if that's coming up next week. Kind of revisit about what are the messages we want to deliver? How do we want to deliver on, you know, do we want to do a presentation? Do we just want to open up? Although, Tom, you did share what there's been no questions submitted as of?
As of yesterday, if there are, they came in today. So, yeah, it's surprisingly, shockingly quiet. I don't have a reason for it.
Do we have a Plan B if there aren't a question?
Well, yes. How do we fill two hours of time?
Bingo. Where's the money?
There'll be questions.
There'll be questions? Yeah, but two hours is a long time for random questions.
And there may be random questions for the audience, which is why it's time to kind of prepare for.
Yeah, we prefer them upfront, to the extent they're detailed and they require a detailed answer, just to make sure we can research it and be in a position to answer it accurately. We'll do our best to field them as they come.
We were also going to send a Power School announcer on Monday, so that any school families who have questions, who have not yet submitted them, just to remind them of the link and see if that generates any additional.
Yeah, it's very prominent, it's got its own button on the homepage of the town.
It's pretty obvious.
Town website, promoted it through a Facebook page. So, I don't know what more we can do to kind of get the word out.
There's a big banner on the school department page too, that's scrolling through.
Reminding them of the date, but I don't think it says to submit questions.
Well, I think in the letter, in the leader also, it said in there, please submit questions through the budget forum.
It's about today, I think.
Right, but I mean, so it's not just electronic media that it's out on. We're in print too, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I did, Peter, grab the presentation that Jody and Sean did last year. So, we had, we went yesterday, Tom, myself, folks from IT, Collette and Kelly. We all went down to check out Wentworth and see how it could work out. And so, we're planning on you guys still having a sort of presentation like had been done in the past. And if you want to just take a look at that or give us your talking points, so that way if there are any charts or graphs that need to be generated, we can support you in that.
Peter and I did talk, I don't think there's any requirement that you do a presentation. That's been the history, short history, albeit, but that's what we've done in the past. But it's always been very, very high level. Really, that night is intended, was designed for the people's time, is to talk about what they want to talk about, not us.
Right, and I think our presentation is.
Three or four slides each.
Yes.
Sure.
Ten minutes, tops.
But I think it's also fair, because some changes have already been, have happened since first reading. So, it might be fair to give a synopsis of what the current state is as of that day, with whatever adjustments that have already come in, whether it's insurance or something, as the numbers spill in. You know, I don't think it's the magic eight ball, but it's at least saying, okay, we're, this is the way we're trending right now.
Yeah, I'll echo Julie's comments. Peter, we stand ready to support you however you need it.
So, maybe, Joe, you're not getting there, maybe soon. Probably we can do that, yeah. But if we don't have questions, I mean.
If we don't have questions, could we take some of the questions we've received in the past and just update the answers? Just to, I mean, if they passed them in the past, maybe they're viable today, you know, for this year's budget.
Some of it are very specific, but there are some that would apply to.
Maybe ones that are common across those years.
Or maybe you're just a process update. What's the, what are next steps, what are the next phases or something? I don't know, I, I mean, it is for them, but.
Could hold a joint workshop that night.
Right, I mean.
I didn't know we wanted, because we've had some conversations. I mean, I remember Sean's last year was, you know, he talked about the process and kind of the longer term view. And I didn't know if we wanted to talk a little bit about that this time, maybe about what we are going to do going forward. I mean, we've kind of talked, you know, how do we plan out this off-landing? What does it look like? How do we do it? I don't know if that's a place that we can share. We had talked about, is there any reason for this group to continue to meet? Maybe during the summer or off, once we get through this hurdle, we'll take some time off to kind of recharge. But then really think about a process of how, how do we kind of map out what the next couple of years are going to be? Because you've got, we've got, you know, some, you know, on the municipal side, you've got the public safety building, the library. We've got some of those things. We also still have some lingering effects of just sort of, you know, the funding cuts. So, I don't know if that makes any sense or not. Is there any interest in this group? And if that's something we can commit to as a group and can announce, whether that. So, I didn't know if we could just take a different direction on this and maybe keep it in kind of Sean's vein of an overview. But are there some messages we really want to kind of deliver with this budget this year?
I think I like the idea of this group continuing on, maybe less frequently, obviously. I mean, I love it every other week, but just to sort of keep each other abreast of things that are coming up or ways that we can work through some different ideas that come up, not necessarily January through May.
And bear in mind, we also have, I mean, regardless of what happens in November, we typically realign everything after November, December or so. I think we realign everything anyway. So, if we could maybe leave, we'll say the legacy, but a blueprint or a, here's where we, here's where we're at right now. Here's what we think the next couple of steps are for the next group to come in and pick it up and move it along.
Long-range facility planning is something that is of collective interest and probably really requires a much deeper conversation about what those priorities are and how they fit together.
Going forward, some conversations, like, you know, it's one-time-one budget. So, how do we balance the need over time of both, both entities as they kind of move through their cycles? You know, and how do we manage, you know, it's, we're probably in this time where revenue is changing. So, what does that do? And how do we adjust on that type of thing? So, I don't know if that would, if we announced that, we talked a little bit about that, whether that creates some interest in the community about kind of having that ongoing dialogue.
I mean, I personally want to keep it at the 50,000-foot level of saying, you know, and obviously we've got to dive into the detail on this year's budget to some extent to, you know, and get that out there. That's, I think that's priority one, because that's the most pressing thing. But I do like your, your idea of saying, you know, at, because the goal here was to kind of be hopefully looking two, three years into the future with these discussions, instead of reacting to every single year's budget, you know. And, you know, now that we're, we've pretty much bottomed out with state volatility for school funding at least. Now, jury's still out on municipal revenue sharing, but.
Well, and I think the jury's still out with school funding.
Fair enough. Well, but I think the only place it could go is up.
Right. If we're, yeah, assuming that we're at the worst-case scenario with God today, then, you know, we have a different perspective.
And maybe that's what we, we talk about is, you know, the stability of a lack of funding, you know. I mean, that is kind of the silver lining of the cloud, is that the volatility is somewhat removed now. We could do that incremental planning that we had wanted to do and talked about then. And what that level is, that's probably more for a year-to-year discussion, I would think, but.
So, Peter, are you saying that you would want to sort of create an agenda for the forum that we could advertise ahead of time? To raise interest or?
Well, I mean, that wasn't necessarily thinking that, but if we're not getting any questions, you know, it's kind of not, not necessarily. Could be a good omen. No, it was more of, really of a question about how do we build on where we are? Because I think wherever we end up with the numbers, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a tough conversation or where we are. And, you know, how do we continue that dialogue? And how do we keep both sides that feel passionately about this issue kind of engage and still be respectful and civil about the process and try to understand both sides so we can get, you know, I mean, our goal should be still to get this passed the first time through. I think that's, that's going to, we all got to hang together to do that. So, how do we do that?
Yep, yep.
So, I don't know if we want to talk about those things and just take it, kind of build on the work, Discover What Kindness project and others, and say, let's open the dialogue and that type of thing, do a high-level view. I know Sean, last year, you know, kind of built on the three, five, I always get that mixed up, the three, five, seven.
Sean, we had to keep, make sure his time was very limited. I went back and I sent an email to Tom saying, again, just reminding you of the heading we came on.
It's like too small.
So, I think, you know, this is, I think Julie handed to you, this was Sean's. I don't see mine in here. So, the twelve or so are Sean's. And I think I had like five.
I think I recall yours was just like what he said, and that was.
No, I was first, Lee's first.
Oh, oh, okay, all right.
It wasn't? Two separate ones?
Yeah, they must be. When I, I was looking in, in my old file last year, so what I told was that, which I think may have been what Sean sent us to build off of or something. I don't know, obviously I didn't get the whole thing. You may have the whole final.
And the only other question I had too is that, you know, actually, you know, both your joint presentations that you did, do we think that was a pretty good audience that tunes into that? Or is some of that stuff worth repeating?
Julie and Mike collaboration?
Yeah.
Are you happy whether it was well viewed well?
No, 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 that would rephrase that.
Would it be a total repeat for most people that, that come? Or do you think a lot of people haven't really seen?
Frankly, just to check, you haven't moved the needle much. You've talked a lot, but other than some of the reductions that were delivered by the school department last week, that's really, and that's not going to move the needle enough, obviously. So, there's not much change at that point.
Right.
Between now and then, we'll have, we will have, well, we've had, we'll have at least one or two finance maybe.
Between now and then?
No, there's one.
No, next Wednesday.
Oh, that's right.
You're here, this is the one.
This is the joint one, right.
So, then the question is, does it bear repeating to talk about some of the budget drivers or some of the, you know, high-level items that other, that people might have missed? My sense is, and this may be completely inaccurate, that if you're making the effort to come to the budget forum, you've probably already heard something.
I feel you already know that.
Because it's kind of a, it's a commitment to a higher level of.
But, you know, we'll send it, just, you might have a slide or two that you like and grab it.
I think it's a good idea to run through the budget drivers, because that, you know, I mean, again, some of the intangibles, like the insurance, we know now. So, so we can, we can at least update those and say, here are the remaining budget drivers that are out there, you know, and then maybe a plan of how we're going to try and address those issues between now and vote. And the second, well, between now and second reading, not between now and the vote, but between now and second reading.
So, so on the, so on the school side, are you guys comfortable with some of the things that have been put on the table? I mean, that, can they, that's ahead of your second reading though, right? The budget forum?
What, what things on the table you need to talk about on Wednesday night?
Yeah, we tell it, tell it.
Yeah, I think for us, it's going to be a very sort of general presentation. I don't think we're getting into the nitty-gritty of a presentation with specific reductions on Wednesday night, are we?
No, I, I, that's up to you guys. I guess my only point was to say, we have had updates.
Right, right, right. I think that, I think that's important, because I don't know that people, those only came about in the last week.
Right.
So, I think those are absolutely sort of top of the list of things that should be highlighted and talked about. But like Tom said, it's, it's not getting us to where we need to be.
Right, so then, obviously, someone's going to ask that question. So, what else? So, what's next? And that's where that discussion goes. We've got more meetings, we've got more opportunities, we've got more issues to look at. Here are the remaining drivers that we've got to focus on. And, you know, we've got here are the dates of meetings. Come on in, listen, whatever, and we'll have something that's going to be ready for second reading. I mean, that's the normal process. I mean, I wish we could report out better numbers, but if we don't have numbers to report, at least an update in the process of what we do have and where we're at. And then let the questions come in. And I'm sure we'll get questions just like that, so, you know.
And we have to remember that that's the point of, of this whole forum.
Right, right.
Instead of us continuing to sort of talk.
Right.
Talk to people, let them.
Yeah, I mean, I thought, like I said, a five-minute update of here's where we're at now, here's what's left. Okay, ask your questions.
Right.
And then, and then really the second agenda item on here too is then to talk a little bit about, okay, so sort of, and then we can circle back to the, the talking point, because it, do we have any thought of where we want to be? I mean, where, what do we think, you know, the endpoint of where we need to get to? And, you know, is it, is it where we sit now? Is it, is it a different number? If it is a different number, can we Wednesday night commit, much to Chris's point, okay, it's still a work in progress and our goal is to get to a certain sort of target number that we can deliver. Are we, is that, is that a fair conversation for, for this group?
I was going to say, I think it's always a work in progress. You know, I don't think it's ever final until we get to that second reading. But for us, I know that's what we have been doing for the last week and we'll continue to do for the next week, is try to figure out.
Where.
Yeah, what's still working and how do we.
Yeah, to the point of it never being final, we're always every day assessing our resources and assessing our needs. And what I have been thinking about on the school side of things is possibly curtailing any nonessential spending for the rest of FY '17, so that we can try to generate as much fund balance as possible in FY '17 to be able to help us as we plan forward, not only for FY '18, but for FY '19. And so, Tom and I have talked a little bit about that and what that could mean for us in terms of just setting up our community for a more balanced budget over the next several years. That's one, one bit of.
Isn't that something like to be talked about Wednesday night, kind of that, that concept?
Yeah, I mean.
She was in position to release that Tuesday, right, to your staff?
I'm planning to, or thinking about having this conversation with my leadership council on Tuesday. So, could certainly talk to that on Wednesday night.
If, yeah, if it goes well, probably could pull it with that. Again, in that packaging of the message, you know, I think it'd be really important to say, you know, we hear you. You know, I mean, there's, there's different viewpoints. We've heard all viewpoints, and what we're trying to do is find a way to navigate the next couple of years, which are going to be challenging for all of us on, on both sides.
I mean, it strikes me, there's a couple of things that might be good coming from the two of you at that meeting. I think I've heard consensus and certainly speak up if I've heard it wrong, but we're in this together and we want to finish it together. So, I think kind of reiterating that commitment. And now's where it gets touchy, now's where we can get divided. So, I think just reiterating that's kind of commitment to the process is important. And I think there's a recognition around this table that where we're at is not acceptable, that that's not going to fly. If we truly expect and want to have success in the first round, where we're at today isn't enough. Where we end up, I don't think we can say.
Right.
At this point. But I think a recognition would be important for folks to know that we have more work to do. Is that fair? Does everyone agree with these statements?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I've, from my own kind of personal approach, have jotted down a couple of, I guess, you know, factors, if you will, that we can try and utilize. And it doesn't mean that I'm, I'm saying, it's like, I've gotten things like increased use of fund balance. I don't have a number to that. I'm not saying like add another 150,000. I think that's one of the discussions I was hoping to have in this group is what level, do we want to do that, A? And if we do, to what extent? And once we have that shift, do we know what the impact is going to be in that and what that means? So, do we have to adjust our, are we going to pull our stops out on, on our policy that we did? Or are we going to not touch fund balance because we're not comfortable with doing that? Because we want it to be there over time? And if we don't do that, you know, what, what's, what are the other options? We could do more liberal projections of excise tax or valuation, you know. But there are consequences to doing all of those things. So, I was hoping that we'd be able to at least put this stuff out on the table and say, because some of this is school-driven, some of it's not. But if it's, if it's all of us together, I think it's important for you guys to hear the things that we've got to do as a town side, because that way it's not, you're feeling like you're shouldering the majority of the, of the burden, closing the gap. We're doing the majority of it, you know.
Maybe a way to address that is to just.
What, what things on the table you need to talk about on Wednesday night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think for us, it's gonna be a very sort of general presentation. I don't think we're getting into the nitty gritty of a presentation with specific reductions on Wednesday night, are we?
No, I, I, that's up to you guys. I guess my only point was to say, we have had updates.
Right, right, right. I think that, I think that's important to, because I don't know that people, those only came about in the last week.
Right.
So I think those are absolutely sort of top of the list of things that should be highlighted and talked about. But like Tom said, it's, it's not getting us to where we need to be.
Right. So then, obviously, someone's gonna ask that question. So what else?
So what's next?
So what's next? And that's where that discussion goes. We've got more meetings, we've got more opportunities, we've got more issues to look at. Here are the remaining drivers that we've got to focus on. And, you know, we've got, here are the dates of meetings. Come on in, listen, whatever, and we'll have something that's gonna be ready for second reading. I mean, that's the normal process. I mean, I, I wish we could report out better numbers. But if we don't have numbers to report, at least an update in the process of what we do have and where we're at, and then let the questions come. And I'm sure we'll get questions just like that. So, you know.
And, and we have to remember that that's the point of, of this whole forum.
Right, right.
Instead of us continuing to sort of talk, talk to people, let them.
Yeah, I mean, I thought, like I said, a five minute update of, here's where we're at now, here's what's left. Okay, ask your questions.
Right, yep.
And then, and then really the second agenda item on here too is then to talk a little bit about, okay, so sort of, and then we can circle back to the talking point because it, do we have any thought of where we want to be? I mean, where we think, you know, the end point of where we need to get to? And, you know, is it, is it where we sit now? Is it, is it a different number? If it is a different number, can we, Wednesday night commit, much to Chris's point, okay, it's still a work in progress and our goal is to get to a certain sort of target number that we can deliver. Are we, is that, is that a fair conversation for, for this group?
I, I was gonna say, I think it's always a work in progress. You know, I don't think it's ever final until we get to that second reading. But for us, I know that's what we have been doing for the last week and we'll continue to do for the next week, is try to figure out.
Where?
Yeah, what's still working and how do we?
Yeah, to the point of it never being final, we're always every day assessing our resources and assessing our needs. And what I have been thinking about on the school side of things is possibly curtailing any non-essential spending for the rest of FY17 so that we can try to generate as much fund balance as possible in FY17 to be able to help us as we plan forward, not only for FY18 but for FY19. And so Tom and I have talked a little bit about that and what that could mean for us in terms of just setting up our community for a more balanced budget over the next several years. That's one, one bit of.
Is that something like to be talked about Wednesday night? Because of that, that concept?
Yeah, I mean.
She isn't positioned to release that Tuesday, right, to your staff?
I, I'm planning to, or thinking about having this conversation with my leadership council on Tuesday. So could certainly talk to that on Wednesday night.
If, yeah, if it goes well, we could pull it with that. Again, in that packaging of the message, you know, I think it'd be really important to say, you know, we hear you. You know, I mean, there's, there's different viewpoints. We've heard all viewpoints and what we're trying to do is find a way to navigate the next couple of years, which are gonna be challenging for all of us on, on both sides.
I mean, it strikes me, there's a couple of things that might be good coming from the two of you at that meeting. I, I think I've heard consensus and certainly speak up if I've heard it wrong, but we're in this together and we wanna finish it together. So I think, kind of reiterating that commitment. And now's where it gets touchy, now's where we can get divided. So I think just reiterating that's kind of commitment to the process is important. And I think there's a recognition around this table that where we're at is not acceptable, that, that's not gonna fly. If we truly expect and wanna have success in the first round, where we're at today isn't enough. Where we end up, I don't think we can say.
Right.
At this point. But I think a recognition would be important for folks to know that we have more work to do. Is that fair? Does everyone agree with these statements?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I've, from my own kind of personal approach, have jotted down a couple of, I guess, you know, factors, if you will, that we can try and utilize. And it doesn't mean that I'm, I'm saying, it's like, I've gotten things like increased use of fund balance. I don't have a number to that. I'm not saying like add another 150,000. I think that's one of the discussions I was hoping to have in this group is what level, do we wanna do that, A? And if we do, to what extent? And once we have that shift, do we know what the impact is gonna be in that and what that means? So that, do we have to adjust our, are we gonna pull our stops out on, on our policy that we did? Or are we going to not touch fund balance because we're not comfortable with doing that because we want it to be there over time? And if we don't do that, you know, what, what's, what are the other options? We could do more liberal projections of excise tax or valuation, you know. But there are consequences to doing all of those things. So I, I was hoping that we'd be able to at least put this stuff out on the table and say, because some of this is school driven, some of it's not. But if it's, if it's all of us together, I think it's important for you guys to hear the things that we've gotta do as a town side because that way it's not, you're feeling like you're shouldering the majority of the, of the burden of closing the gap. We're doing the majority of it, you know.
Maybe a way to address that is to just mention by reference the sort of areas on the revenue side, for instance, that excises is worth looking back at. Home state exemption is an area that I, I think we should look at. There's some extra resources potentially there. Last week, we heard potentially some grant monies from the state in support of the MLTI. I don't know enough about that, but that's a point that's worth checking back in on. I think that's safe territory, just to say, these are areas we're watching and we'll likely make some adjustments without.
Right.
Saying what they are, because we don't know.
Right. And I think to your point though, Peter, is we, you know, rather than, I would think, instead of, right now, our goal is 3%. That's our stated targeted goal. I think, I think to get there, and I'll wait to see how it shakes out, but I think to get there, we're talking about some kind of reduction in services on some level. I'm not necessarily comfortable with that personally, but if we're gonna hold to that number, we've gotta know what the ramifications of that are. And then if, if, if that number's not gonna hold, what's tolerable for us? What is something that we can adjust and what can we settle on?
Yeah, I think that, I think it's a pretty thorough corridor between what that sort of low and the high of where that is and how we package that.
I don't know if it's helpful to this group and then to, in the budget forum, but to get to your 3% using the mid-range valuation estimate, you're looking at about $2.1 million swamp.
What was that? 2.1?
2.1.
Yep.
2.1 on the mid range is 3%. 3.5 would be about 1.8, 1.7?
1.7.
1.7.
1.8, 1.7, 9.
So 1.8 gets you a 3 to 5 percent.
So that may be helpful for folks to kind of wrap their brain around what is the, what's the challenge ahead of us.
Yep.
Chris, to your point of fund balance, I'll offer my two cents. And it, I think it'd be far better not to touch it any further because what we've all recognized is we'll have a similar challenge next year. And we're gonna need all the resources we can get to get through next year. So through curtailments, through not hitting it further this year to make this budget process, this one go easier, all of that, I think, speaks to prudent management and planning for that rainy day that we know is coming. So that you may be able to sidestep that, not sidestep it, but speak to it and, in a forward-thinking manner as opposed to, we're gonna see what more we can squeeze out of it for this year to get through this, this validation vote.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with that. As long as we have that discussion and we understand that collectively and, and we can, you know, express, look, we looked at that, that's clearly an option that we had. We didn't, we're gonna choose to pursue the direction we're gonna pursue collectively because we talked about it and we figured here's the, here's what the potential outcomes are. This is why we're at the point we're at right now. Because anybody could come back and say, well, you should use more fund balance. You did all fund balance. I mean, there's always gonna be that pushback counterpoint. As long as we can justify the, that we've looked at it and we've explored it and then explain why we're doing what we're doing, I mean, I think that's a big thing.
If this year was an aberration, you know, that would be a real viable option. But we know that there's a similar challenge next year. It'd be really imprudent to, to raid the biggie bag today.
Yeah, fund balance, fund balance is the one time. It's not a renewable resource.
That's right, yeah, that's right. But we also changed our fund balance policy to increase our minimums. So.
Made it even tougher or something?
We did, we did. So, and that's why I was saying before, do we, you know, do we look at suspending that? And if we do that, there's also other ramifications for that. But that's more of a, it's more of a council finance discussion, I think. But, but I'm saying, if, if, I mean, if we decide that's what we wanna do, that's an option. You know, we just gotta talk about it and vet it and figure out the direction to go in.
And I think for, I don't wanna speak for Kate and Julie, but on our, on, under the school budget, notice I didn't say on our side, but it didn't sound very collaborative. We, we have asked and now continue to sort of go back and really sort of tweak, we, we like to make Kate as uncomfortable as possible in her projection.
I'm glad that hasn't changed.
So, so there's not as much leeway or fund balance at the end. And so it gets very tricky on, from, we can't spend, even if we get more, you know, we can't spend more than what we have budgeted. So if we're budgeting razor thin.
No, I'm, I'm very much aware of that. And I guess, I guess my point was to say, you know, we moved, we also took the step this year to move things from CIP into operation. Is that the right year to do that? And, you know, we know what those are. They're the same drivers they are every year. And as long as we, as long as we're aware of that and it's not a surprise, maybe this isn't the year to do that. I'm not suggesting that we take it all out. I'm just saying, that's another option that we have that we can talk about and what the impact of that's gonna be. Because it will reduce the ask, but it will also require a heavier burden on, on balance at the end of the year.
And that conversation, the bigger picture, forward-thinking.
Right.
Recognition that we've got some things to do, but conversation around, is this the time to do it?
Right.
Can we afford to do it all at once?
Right.
The other point that we'd like to, just, we'd like to bring up at some point is, in the event, as likely as it may be, but in the event we do get more state support for education.
Yep.
Because I'm quite certain you all will be making final budget decisions and the voters will actually probably vote on it before we ever know anything from state. We'd love to have some conversation around what to do in that event.
Yeah.
And there will be likely a second ballot question that the voters would, would agree to.
About how the funds are reused?
Right. So decide that upfront. And to the extent you can get through that today, that's another point that you could raise before, that these are things that you've, were prepared to do.
Yep.
So now, do the vote, I didn't know that it was the voters that decide that. I thought it was just language in the warrant. There's two pieces to it. And I brought the document that MSMA sent us and I can.
Let's not go to the, yeah, no.
It's, there are two pieces to the process, but there is a statute in place that says, in the event that subsidy changes after you've already passed your budget, because you have this public vote, there has to be some mechanism for you to accept that money and decide what to do with it. And so the idea is to know upfront what the plan is.
Yeah, so if you do nothing, it goes to fund balance. It comes in as an unexpected revenue.
You can't use it, utilize that.
If you wanna spend it for something, or you want to have it go to the bottom line and reduce property tax rate, you need to say so.
And the timing could work, that it could be factored into the mill rate for.
Oh, we'll certainly know that before commitment, before early August.
My, my, my personal opinion is, is I don't, I, I, that's a gamble in my mind because if we come in at, let's say, I'm just gonna throw numbers out there, it's not real, but we come in at 3.6 and we say, there's a chance that whatever extra money comes in from the state, it might really be 3.4. So we think it's really gonna be 3.4.
You can't attribute a number to it, Chris, though.
Right. So I, I would, I would prefer, if the money's gonna come in, it will be utilized at some point, whether it's this year or next year. I would, I just, I'm always cautious about committing those funds to try and have an impact this year without, A, knowing what they are, knowing to the extent or how we would, you know, just arbitrarily say it's gonna go right to taxes, tax relief. I'd rather put it into the back end of the reserve fund. And then next year, when we have this very same discussion, that, that fund is gonna be increased by X amount that we received from the state and we can utilize it. Then we can make a decision on it. You know what I mean?
But that's, right. So that's one of the choices. But at least putting that language in upfront gives us still that option.
I think we only have to vote on it if we wanna utilize it this year. Otherwise, I think it defers right to fund balance automatically because it's not appropriated and then it's available for next year. Is that correct or is that not correct?
I believe if you do nothing, it would just be unexpected revenue and it would go fund balance.
But if you put the, the, in this year, you then have, still have that option to carry on to next year.
The language is.
But it may be an important thing for the public to tell them that you're, we're thinking of this.
Right.
And we're, we're improving with it.
You know, you're getting hit if it doesn't come through. If there is some additional funding, then do they see it and I think, you know, I think that, that public relations piece?
Absolutely.
Because what we wanna, what we wanna be able to do is not have the divisiveness that we had several years ago. How do we get everybody's in this together? Like, there is extra revenue. And it doesn't have to be all or nothing. I mean, we could talk about a certain portion goes into fund balance and a certain portion goes back to taxpayer relief. And I'd say.
I can even be pretty, pretty specific about it. I think, in, in the guessing, you could say, if I'm not mistaken, you could say, you know, anything up to and including an extra $200,000 would go to fund balance and then above that, it would go to tax relief or you could split it.
I'd recommend percentages because we're not gonna know what that number is. And as soon as you start addressing numbers, what if it's $2 million?
I mean, yeah, but that's.
I like it, but.
Personally, I think that's a gimmick, right? It's pay me now or pay me later. We're gonna have access to whatever funds come in next year anyway. So I'd hate to, I'd hate to try and overthink it this year and at the, at the expense of not bridging this 2.1 worst case or best case or whatever, this million dollar gap. I mean, I think it's, because it's an intangible, right? So if we're hoping, if we're throwing it out that, yes, we've evaluated it, yes, there's, we could have used it that way. But if it comes in and it's higher, we're still gonna have access to it next year. You know what I mean?
But if you're at 3.8 or whatever the number is, you're not at 3%, it might be really important for voters to know that anything that comes in is gonna go to the bottom line.
Yeah.
I think it's a, I agree with Tom. I think it's a nod to our community for their, for their anticipated support. And, and if we do realize more revenue than we anticipated, I think it, I think it's healthy. I think it's a healthy gesture.
And you said they could actually vote on it, whether they, so they can decide.
See a second question, new, the, do you approve the school budget validation bill question, if you will? And then a second question on having them direct us or agree to, this is what we do in the event of excess funding.
Right. I don't think it's a, you know, pick A, B, or C, though. I think we would say this community or this, this group has decided that if we get additional funding, we will use it to do X. And do you agree, yes or no?
Yes, correct.
You couldn't really take a poll, you know, to see what the.
But you'd also wanna, wouldn't you have to put something in that language, shoot at, say, if this resolution fails? Or if they might say, no, we don't approve this, it automatically reverts to fund balance at that point anyway, right? It's not like we lose the money. The money comes in, we just can't use it this year.
Right. You just haven't made a choice about where it's going in the current year.
Gives you more flexibility on what to do with it in the event that this magical thing might happen.
Well, and I mean, you know, we talked about it being magical and who knows, but never has the, has Augusta agreed on the number that the budget, that the governor gave him the budget the first time. It's always more than that number. So we base our budget on his number, but that's not where it ever ends. So the question is, we have no idea where it may end this year.
Right.
And, or if it'll have any impact because we're already a minimum receiver. If it's not a significant amount, it's not really moving our needle.
It'd have to be over $730,000 for us to see a penny.
I'd also like to add, never in the history of this town have we surpassed a full, a first reading budget without modifications. But that's just me.
So is that the other formula worth it? We'd have to get over $730,000 tax relief of minimum receiver?
Yeah.
Because we were originally scheduled to receive 1.4.
1.4.
But then because of the 33% special education requirement in the, in the law, it's increased, it increased our subsidy to 2.1, which is a difference of 730, if my memory is correct, roughly. Do you ever think about?
So the chances of getting much more than 730 is small.
It's hard to say. I mean, it really is going to depend on what, yeah, and what happens with the, the biennial budget. But then also.
The competing proposal from the Democrats has funding at 55% and that could produce something excessive of that.
And, and even if, if the Democrats, their, their budget proposal doesn't fly, there are people on both sides of the aisle who are agreeing that 55% needs to be funded for education. It's just a matter of how to get there.
Right. And, and the 48 changes that were proposed in the formula, no one is agreeing to. That's just my understanding. Or at least, no majority is agreeing.
So conceptually though, I, I don't know if this, this group can, you know, I think Tom, I mean, we're closing in on timeframes to make decisions. I, I think Chris had a suggestion that it, it just, it just goes to fund balance. I think that's right, right? That, that would be one position.
Yep.
Another position is that we talk about some portion of it maybe going back to the taxpayer, if in fact, if anything. And so I don't know where people come down on that. I, I'm kind of more in the other court of saying, I think, just, if we're gonna go out and say, this is a partnership and we need you and, you know, we're working as best we can to try to get this in that range that, you know, we think is passable on the first read. But if things change, here's, you know, we will share that. So that's where I would be. So I don't know how other people.
So does that have a percentage breakdown for you or?
It, it would probably be a percentage breakdown. I haven't gotten there yet. 50/50 or 60/40 or 70/30, but.
The only time, if it helps, may not. The only time we did this before was in 2013. It was before there's legislation that it actually allows us to ask this question of voters. And at that time, we received $788,000 in change after the fact. And so we went back to the voters in July with approval in hand and had them approve some portion of that, 520 of that go to offset the main purse cost. I think it was the first year that we picked up local cost of the teacher retirement. And then the balance went, reduced the property tax.
So what was, what was that ratio?
I think, I don't, that was a real number. I mean, that's a real number. That was a real number and that's just the product of the two.
Yeah. But we had, we knew what that, that revenue was gonna be.
It may differ, we don't write those numbers.
Right. But I think percentage wise.
Well, and, and we had a, we had a fixed cost that we were gonna be presented the bill for, which was main purse, which we hadn't budgeted for. Because the word on the street when we passed our budget was, oh, that's never gonna happen. So we took the chance and didn't put it into our budget for expenditures.
It happened, but they sent us more money to compensate.
Exactly. So that was, so there, it's a little bit of a different, different scenario where we couldn't operate business as usual without that $500,000. I think in, in these circumstances, what we're saying is we're gonna generate a budget through which we can, you know, provide our services and our programs. And then if we get additional funding, it's gonna be over and above that.
I like the suggestion of some sort of split between property tax relief and having money go to fund balance for future use, future discussion of how to use it and when to use it. I think that gives your biggest political bang, if you will. I'm hopeful to, that this group in the final analysis will get within spitting distance of your goal. And that sort of promise to the voters that if we get any more, it goes to the bottom line, I think is gonna be pretty helpful.
Do you think we'll know before the second reading?
No.
I don't think they'll know before the validation.
I don't think we'll know till July at that, right?
They have, they supposedly have to get the budget passed by June 30 or things grind will halt with Augusta. But, you know, that's happened. So who knows?
So what do you guys think? What do you guys think?
I think that there should be language in there. I think it, it is goodwill and I think it shows that it gives us options. Because we just don't know. It's completely blind going in at that point.
I, I strongly agree that something should go back to the taxpayers. And so what that percentage is, I'm not sure how to calculate that in the most fair way. But I do think that what we should do and the remainder of that going into fund balance to offset.
Next year.
Next year.
Well, to Chris's point, I mean, it, it, in a sense, it goes to the taxpayers either way. It goes to taxpayers today or tomorrow. But I think that it will probably help us as we go forward and say, ooh, geez, you know, hitting 3% is really gonna impact services in this town. So here's where we landed, but we have the anticipation that if we get relief from the state, that we'll be passing that on to the community as well. I kinda like that message.
I think it's hard to remember a year from now, too. You know, when we're, when we're talking about, remember this from fund balance, where if that happens in, you know, August, it's, I don't know, I've kinda lived in the moment, so it would feel a little better.
Could you say something like, if the budget came in at 3.4% increase, could you put something in the, in the voter question that said, anything we receive that will bring us down to 3% and then access those to fund balance or something to that? I mean, it may all go to reduced property tax or?
The KIS principle ought to be front and center here. It gets complicated. I understand you, the sentiment of your suggestion, but I think it's simple for people to understand the better.
50/50?
Or?
Well, nothing from nothing is nothing too. Nothing from nothing is nothing.
Right, right.
I can support 50/50.
Yeah, 50/50.
I could support 50/50.
Yeah, I mean, 50/50 aside because I don't think most of the people who go to the polls and ask and answer this question are gonna know what, what it really means. I mean, they don't know what fund balance means. They don't know what, what, what kind of account that, that actually is.
Yeah, and I would just be, I would be afraid the blowback, political blowback[1783.82] Yeah, and I would just be, I would be afraid the blowback, political blowback would be, you promised us relief, and it never came, now, it's easy for us to do exactly what we're doing now, and turn around and point the finger north, and say, well, Augusta didn't give us the relief, so you didn't get the relief, but again, I hate-
That would have to be very clear and specific, that, you know, this is a big, yes.
In the event that, I mean, that's the way the question has to be worded.
And there's like, like there's-
With a picture of a pie in the sky.
And Bill, I kind of agree that they may not understand fund balance, but if it's worded so that they know that they get some relief, they might, I think they might, they might understand that.
The harder question for me is, because I agree that the way the budget was structured, with the items put into capital, the budget, now to expense, or into expense and out of capital was the right thing to do, I'm not sure it's the right thing to do this year, but I think the harder question is, you want to pass it on the first go-round, because once it fails, then the question is, why did it fail? And you're going to have, this year, I think you'll be all over the map, because I think the schools already made a 4.9, reduced by the additional reduction in expenses that you identified at the last time we got together, it's going to put it south of 4.5 in terms of cost increase, well, that's, that's a really good number, that's the best number coming out of the school and logged on, from a cost point of view, so I can't even predict whether people would be saying, because it's only the school budget in the referendum, the town's already sort of done, so you become the only target in town, and it seems somewhat unfair, because then you're, it's, it's just a crapshoot at that point, it's risky, and two years ago, we had enormous risk, where we were talking a $500,000 cut, remember? And then we, and we finally reopened the budget, it's the town's budget, and we sort of worked together to try and hobble together a solution, so I think the first effort, on the first referendum, has to be our best effort, in other words, we have to have as good, even though there's some unpredictability as to how far you cut, I think you have to probably vote down and school, make adjustments in this budget to go about as far as you can go, and it may even be just a what-if, to get, if you say, what if all these other things were in place, what would we have to cut, so that people would know what the consequence of that was, because Chris said earlier, the consequence could be reduce services, and on both sides of the fence, and people go, well, that's not what we want, you know, we're stuck with the loss of revenue from the state, and unfunded mandates from purse and whatnot being thrown at us, I mean, purse, so-
But my question would be, how do we know what's, when good enough is good enough? I mean, it's our 3% but, our 3% goal, and if we feel like we can hit that, and that's what we're comfortable with, and that's what we go out with, you know, I think, to Tom's point, I don't know if we can get to that without implementing service cuts already at this point, so then if we get back to, I think you mentioned 3.5, if we land on that number, let's say, how do we know the voters aren't going to still turn around and say, you promised us 3, it's 3.5 now, sorry.
I mean, I think, and that is the wild card, and I think that's all, that's why when we started about how do we package this.
Which is true, why you want to see, what would 3% actually mean, even though there's certain other variables that could change that, and you just equitably divide up between the schools and the municipality, what that would do, and say, what does 3 look like, and what does 3.5 look like?
I think that's where, where leadership on both sides need to be standing together, talking about the same thing, that we have done our very best to get to this point, and that's where I think this secondary question, it provides maybe an essential sentiment to the voters, that's going to get you over the end line.
Well, if our, one of our big talking points always is, it's the outside, loss of outside funding that's driving us into the situation that we're, you know, we're certainly not comfortable with, and no one else in town is, so it seems like it's a logical progression to say, if that situation changes, we would like to make that an advantage to the voter versus just saying, oh, well, yeah, it might, you know, and there's a certain amount of, I don't know what word to use, but it's kind of like political, or it's grandstanding, or it's fake, or whatever, but it's also real, and it's also a possibility that we could actually provide some relief, so I think addressing it is not a bad thing.
Yeah, you know, Chris, I think, I think where we're faced on the soft landing going forward, you know, it's probably not the conversation for this year, but at some point, I think, you know, if our revenues, if we don't get back revenues, you know, at some point in time, we may have to have those conversations about choices people may want to make, between what they consider essential services across the board for everything, and what they're willing to pay in taxes, and, you know, we really, and that's why I think where we started, is that maybe that's some of the work this group, or a group, can start doing, I mean, we know what they said when we talked about the paper bags on, you know, that was certainly, but, I mean, I think to just flat out say, we'll never ever change any service levels we have, on either side, it's just, we should ask folks and say, hey, here's your choice, you can either, you know, so-
Which in essence is how the budgets are typically structured, right, we've got the level services budget, we've got the request for new investments, and the school has another tier on top of that, but, so, I mean, I guess the question I would have is, Ben, part of that discussion would be, for a baseline, is if we had level services with no increased investment, I'm not saying that new programming would come from internal sources or whatever, but with no additional investments, what percentage are we looking at as a tax revenue for a complete level services budget?
For the whole.
Across the board. And then look at what that tax rate's going to be, what we project that tax rate, because if that comes in at 3.8 or 3.9 or whatever it is, then that's, to me, that's the discussion that we're at, is do we put this out at 3.9 at level services, or do we go lower, and we make the decision to reduce services in the hopes that we pass it the first time around?
I mean, I think it's one of those easier ones, I think, like, this is a totally uneducated guess, somewhere between 3 and 3.5, we probably could do anything more than that, then it becomes, who knows, I mean, I think, so, I mean, I think there's a sweet spot, and so we need to think about that, and how do we package that, how do we talk about it, how do we have the communication, so on the, I think on Tom's suggestion about if there is a miracle, and we do get this Hail Mary returned to us, I think that, I mean, is everybody okay with sort of the concept of some language in there about sharing it back and move forward? I know, I know, that's not, that's not your-
No, no, I'll go with it, that's fine.
Sharing all of it back?
No, no.
Sharing it 50/50?
And I think Bill's point's a great point, but it just has to be really simple for them to understand that it's, we'll come up with it.
With as simple language as possible.
Any additional revenue will be split 50/50 between fund balance and tax rate?
The council tabled the election ballot or the warrant last meeting, so it'll come back to you, may third, if you approve that night, to make sure we have it printed and ready, so that language will come forward to you, and be added, I guess, as an amendment that night, so we'll collaborate and come up with that language.
So maybe at the budget forum, an important thing, if we bring this up as a talking point, is to let the community understand that not only, when we say 50/50, it all, at the end of the day, it's always coming back to you, some, just some this year in FY18, and the rest in FY19.
Right, the 50/50 is years, not who it's going to, it's years.
Right, it doesn't mean that we're then going to, like, you know, I don't know, run off and replace all windows.
My next one, they don't have to qualify, it's this group that will be recommending that to be added, because at that point, the council will not have voted on it, I can't imagine the council will be opposed, but it's not definite until that vote happens on the following, following week.
I think if you present it as a, I mean, I can't see us not supporting, if you presented it as the finance chair to run amendment, this is what we talked about, here's where we're at, I can't see there being opposition to that.
No, just keep careful how you introduce it, this committee will be recommending that.
Okay, so that's helpful, thank you for that. And Chris, I think you brought up the question, which is, you know, probably, you know, is, and I think Bill talked to it, too, this year, to be pulling the stuff from capital to operating, it is a policy we sort of talked about, probably good business practice, and probably something we should do, what's everybody feeling about this year, and what is, what's the total, Tom, that sort of falls into that bucket of, in that 300, 400, $1,000 range, or something like that?
Yeah, the difference between these two numbers here.
Where are you, Tom?
Page 9, page 19.
Right, so in the current budget year, we are appropriating $264,000 to support capital projects, the proposed budget has 559, so one way to look at it is the difference, to me, that's new money this year.
Tom, this is separate, though, from the actual migration of the budget, like, on the school side, we talked about the tech refresh.
Yes, that's separate.
This is actually appropriating funding, keeping the product in CIP, but not bonding money.
Funding source is coming from appropriations rather than bonding.
Difference between these two numbers is the-
Is the extra money to be appropriated this year.
What's the item, sorry, I'm going to start, what's, I don't recall, I mean-
Page 67.
Kate, what's the school funding, you fully funded the school funding software?
For-
The lunch, lunch, food services?
More than a year.
That's in a different spot.
I thought it was-
It's actually, it's represented as tax revenue under the school nutrition fund, so it's part of the tax request, and it's an increase to the tax request, but it's not represented in either the operating budget or the CIP budget, it's just money that wasn't budgeted in the past, that was taken from fund balance, does that make sense?
$100,000 right there. Oh, yeah, okay.
So basically it's a-
So that's a $200,000 thing.
Exactly. Right, so basically, it's a bill that we have to pay every year, but we never budget for, and so typically, that's being paid for out of fund balance.
Fund balance.
So as we're using more fund balance this year, but then also planning to go back in and really tighten our projections, that puts a further squeeze on the flexibility that we would have with fund balance, so, I mean, I would strongly recommend that we keep the food service as-
It's like taking $200,000 from fund balance, which is already stretched, because that's exactly what you're doing.
If you don't raise the funds to pay for it, then not put your-
Since you already said, it's a good practice to fully fund it.
Well, we acknowledge it for every year I've been at this table.
How many, how many years?
And you don't want to monkey around with the fund balance.
Well, it's like you know you're going to have to pay your water bill, you don't know exactly how much it's going to be, but you know, every month, it's about, you know, X amount of dollars, but you haven't saved any money for it.
Yeah, but the challenge is going to be, of course, now, going back, and if we're at 3.5 or 3.6, saying, this is another factor in that it's not just the 1.4 loss in revenue that we moved additional, we're funding additional things in the operational budget that were being used through fund balance or other appropriations.
Or appropriating funds for something that we didn't in the past.
Right, which is why I think having it on the table is important, because if we're looking for that, if we're looking at tax rate, and that's our goal, is to hit a certain tax rate, our certain request to the taxpayers, that's different than our operating budget, right?
Yeah, in hindsight, this may not have been the year to advance those two things, but I think Julie and I both agreed that it was important for us to do what we've been talking about, and to understand what the consequence of that is, I think it's now up to this group, and to figure out whether this is the time to do it, I think it's important for us to continue to acknowledge it must be done, it's something we need to work for, if we don't do it now.
So, Tom, on the net appropriation for capital, exhibit 8, that 295-807, is that all appropriated, that difference between the budget and, that's 17 and 18?
Yes.
It's all appropriated, it's not bonded?
Correct, bonding is showing us under the revenue line. Some of the items that we're looking at, at least in capital equipment, are, for example, 5,000, 20,000, 11,000, 19, 22,000, there is an item here for 80,000 for lease furnishings, replacement and renewal, that is currently scheduled to be appropriated, I mean, I think, Kate and I were talking about that recently, that's yesterday, and I think the funds that we use this year are scheduled to be bonded, so that's an offset, but then that goes to the whole discussion we had yesterday about-
Pay now, maybe pay later.
May now, pay later.
And it's kind of-
Kind of in a, kind of-
Yeah, and it's kind of, I mean, as we're talking about fully funding, or fully budgeting the nutrition program, because we know that's the cost, is the right thing from an accounting perspective, that it should be done, same with moving a lot of the stuff into operational should be, we're just faced with a dilemma about how do we balance the scale this year, and I wasn't following the nutrition conversation, you suggesting it should stay fully funded the way it is?
Yeah.
And not move that, okay, and then on the, on some of the capital things, what's sort of the general feel everybody on the table now, is that it'll last, go too well? Is that?
To me, that's a different bucket.
It does feel different.
Very different.
We can, it's not create an argument for it, I think there's a very rational argument.
Furnishings are, they're more than a year, they're more than.
And we'd be very careful, that not means, that doesn't mean we're going to bond up for 28 years, in some cases, we're financing it for three years, so we're very careful, item by item, as to how that layers into our financing, but the fact is, we're borrowing money of one sort or another, for varying lengths of time, so I think we can make a very legitimate split-based argument, that much of that could be borrowed, it's just a different way of doing it.
I agree.
Typical way of doing it.
It's a useful life argument, they're all, good useful life beyond one year for county purposes, and so it's not improper to do it the way it's been historically, but because they are small, they're short period kind of replacement stuff that repeats itself, we've all agreed that it ought to go into, be expensed rather than capitalized.
But the question becomes, and again, we're moving all nutrition, and we're moving all of this other stuff in, do we want to do half now, half next year, do we want to do partial, we want to just bite the bullet and say, yep, we're doing it all this year, and run the risk of it not passing, and then, and then we've got, you know, if we, I guess, my thing would be, if we keep it in there right now, and it doesn't pass, maybe that's part of Plan B, I don't know.
Yeah, the other way to maybe overly simplify is that if you think of the pressures on the tax rate, we've got some unique pressures, clearly, the loss of 1.4 million in GPA is a pressure, we have no control, so we've got to deal with that, these other two, food service and how we fund capital, have direct pressure on property tax, the difference is, they're somewhat discretionary, and, so, for that reason, they're different, so you could say, can we shoulder that entire tax shift, if you will, and pressure on the property tax all at once, or do we, we deal with the one we have to, and acknowledge that we've got to work toward, or maybe do the food service and not the other, but it's really 2020 before we're in a position of probably addressing that again, is the reality.
And for me, just sort of hearing what Chris is saying, it's much like the IT, in that, you know, it's taken us three or four years to sort of make that full leap into operational, is that the, is that the route we take with the nutrition? Don't do the whole, is it, is it not the whole jump, is it just part of the jump? I think the difference between, between those two scenarios is that the tech refresh was already budgeted in CIP, so the funds were there, it needed to be done, the bills were coming in, some, there was money to pay the bills, what we were saying was, you probably shouldn't be borrowing money to pay those bills.
Right, that's true.
The difference there is that in school nutrition, we don't have another place to find that money except for fund balance, which I think, to Chris's point earlier, is a little bit risky right now, since we're drawing the fund balance so low, I would agree that, you know, perhaps these appropriated amounts, or the shift of $100,000 from CIP to operating and tech refresh this year in our operating budget, could certainly be deferred, because there's another way to do it, and it's a rational, legitimate business way to do things.
And that was the amount that I could ask for.
There's $100,000 that would have been in CIP this year in 17, that's now going to be in operating in 18, or that's the way it's proposed, but I think that, to Julie's point, it's, you know, you have to be cautious about school lunch, because, again, we haven't got another place to go to, we've got a bill coming in, and we haven't really planned to pay for that from somewhere except for from the fund surplus.
Which we're already, also maybe draining.
And we're limited by the state to increase the cost of the food.
And we're limited by the state to increase the cost of the food or?
Yeah, in fact, I, I don't know if I've said it to this group, but we've had some conversations with Peter and he does plan to ask for a waiver to raise the prices in schools next year and get them up to a level that is equivalent to what surrounding schools and high schools are paying. We're a little bit under them. But it's still, you know, it's, it's a heavily sort of supposedly subsidized cost.
Highly regulated, but not highly subsidized.
Right, there you go. Yeah. And subsidized for folks who have a lot of free and reduced lunch population.
Would it be helpful to this group for perhaps Julie and I and our support folks to take all of this into consideration and come to you with kind of a package proposal?
Yeah.
I think that's fantastic.
As the different revenue sources we've kept around today, to see if we can legitimately get more there. We'll consider the capital and the food service piece in the conversation. And that will still leave some significant further deficit to, to get to that $2.1 million. So.
Yeah, we still need to find.
That would require some further work on our part to propose how we're gonna do that.
Other than, I, it'd be good, I mean, I, I mean, I think I do see the food services a little bit differently. And I understand what you're saying, but it is a cost of what you do. We haven't paid for it under fund balance all along. I mean, that's, that just reduces the fund balance you wrote for. That to me is different than a capitalization policy. And I'm a little confused. I thought we'd started moving some of these things over, but we, I know we worked on the policy last year. Is this the first year that we're really are set to kind of?
No. We actually started it last year because.
That's what I thought, so we're somewhat inconsistent.
Most in prior years that, I don't have it here, the $264,090 that we appropriated for 2017, in the past specifically been zero. So we started, we leave it in capital, but instead of bonding it or something like saying, we're appropriating these capital items.
Maybe come up with those recommendations. And then, everybody on a time check, I know we only have an hour scheduled, I think, today? Are we, is everybody?
I just put an hour, just to sort of keep everyone on their toes.
Somebody didn't update my hand.
Optimism.
Would you want a 3.0 and a 3.5 scenario of the total we gotta find?
Well, yeah, again, I'm, 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 this is my personal opinion. I'm hesitant to just put numbers out there without knowing the impact. Because if we go to a 3.0 and it, and it, I want to know what the reductions would be in services.
Exactly. See, if you go to 3.5, you could say, this is the consequence. But if you go to 3.0, there's a further consequence.
Let us get you to a lower point. It's not going to be all the way there, but it's a point that we can comfortably bring to you.
Come to the conversation.
And then we'll see where the conversation goes from there.
We're all nodding.
Okay.
Is there a, do we want to have another meeting prior to the next, I mean, we're running out of time.
It'll be like Monday or Tuesday.
Number for the forum.
Well, we have the best forum on two, on Wednesday, and then we have our second reading on Thursday.
I think that.
So you guys, I mean, this is.
Second reading Thursday, so.
You'll be noodling all of this, this, that process.
And we did have scheduled, on the 27th, we did have a meeting scheduled and we moved it up to this date because of the timeline. I don't know if maybe we.
Still in my calendar.
Still in mine.
It'd probably be good, it'd probably be good to huddle afterwards and we may get some feedback, one way or another.
After the forum, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, if everyone's there.
To keep the meeting on the 27th.
Does that move?
What, what, so what happens, I'm gonna ask a rhetorical question, I kind of already answered it, but what happens after the second reading and further adjustments?
So the school board will need to pass the budget, the school budget, a second reading next week. They will then deliver that to the, to Tom to become our new and improved version of the, our department and the municipal budget. But then, obviously, that bottom line is not set until the council takes their second reading and vote. Once that's done and the town council has said, here's what we'd like to see happen in the school budget, then we have a meeting the night after that and we reallocate those changes. So, I mean, in a sense, we have to, like any other town department, we have to create a legal document that becomes part of the municipal budget that you guys can then act on.
I just wanted to be clear that after second reading, there's still room for discussion.
There's a, there's a meeting with the school board the next night and typically that meeting is in response to where you've.
I don't see the school board's action in second reading doesn't matter, but the council's action in second reading is really to control that piece.
Right.
The school board's second reading is in an effort to present you with a legally embedded.
Unified position.
Portion of your municipal budget.
Yep.
And I kind of hate to ask this question, but I.
Well, don't.
If we come to, if we say, okay, this is what the reductions will be if we're at a three and a half, and this is what the reductions will be if we're at a 3%, is there any, do you have any preference for what portion of that would be school or non-school or do you leave that up to us to?
We talk about that on the 27th, I guess, right?
I guess you guys will work on that.
One town, one budget.
I think that's Tom and Julie.
Fifty, fifty, is that what you're saying?
To, to second Thursday.
Okay, so.
Anyway, I don't know why the people are laughing. Why is that?
Oh, no, it's, it's not.
You just assumed it was getting something.
That's.
See, they were running behind. Any, anything else anybody have? So we, we will keep meeting next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
And the, the forum, you guys are gonna connect and then reach out to us for materials?
I'll circulate the presentations so you have those available too.
What's the date next Thursday?
27th at 2, 2 PM I have.
Yeah, that's what I have.
And then, and then Jody, you and I can get together, maybe we'll circulate whatever we come up with to everybody.
Yeah, we're here to help support. If you see the presentation.
I feel like last year, there was a lot more support.
There was.
Okay.
I'm gonna send you both what, what I presented for the first, what Kate and I presented for the first reading. Tom's gonna send you what we co-presented at the town council first reading. And then I'll also send you the leadership council's school board presentation so you can pick and choose what you like.
And I will send the joint presentation to Jody. You can have four presentations to look at.
Yeah.
You just take from everyone.
One, one has to keep in mind, last year, as I recall, there were eight of us up on the stage. It was George and I, Ruth and Kate, Jody and Sean, and I think the two councils, the council chair and school board chair.
Oh, right, right.
They didn't really have any involvement. We have a combination for eight, but we can go with six, so that's really just kind of a housekeeping thing.
I think we should have one in the back of the spotlight.
You would have to talk to the chairs because.
The rest of the team is down in the.
I don't know that the chair of the school board or the chair of the town council had much to add, would you?
No, I didn't speak.
I can remember.
I know, that's what I'm saying, you should talk to the chair of the town council.
Which may be a reason that sex is fine.
If you're not here, you're not gonna vote.
There's enough room to pull two more chairs out, so we'll plan for the six of us up there.
I think that's fine.
So did, did Colette tell you that we were thinking about being on risers in the front?
She didn't tell me you're thinking, she told me you decided.
Oh, okay.
There's a difference.
Where are you going to do, the, the library or the?
The cafeteria.
Cafeteria?
Yeah.
Cafeteria?
Yeah.
The budget form is.
You have anybody agreeing on any red cards?
Six, 7 PM next Wednesday at the Wentworth Cafeteria.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any comments?
Before public comment, actually, Peter, if I'm looking at this correctly, the 27th is your second reading. We've got a finance committee meeting that day at 6. Where is that?
The other thought, Camber A, I believe, or Camber B.
Okay. So those are some.
Well, I don't know that Camber B is a great option because we also have that night the calendar issue. We need the full.
We already moved them once, so I feel that.
Might just have to be a crowded meeting.
It'll just have to be crowded meetings.
We knew that there would be conflicts. We didn't know that there'd be controversy or agenda.
I don't think they did either, but, well, not today, I can move to my conference room.
I'll check on availability.
That may be the.
Well, are you, what's your six to seven?
I've got down six to eight.
I think they have presentations.
We have presentations, yeah.
Oh, so you guys are still doing the department venue thing. Oh, that's gonna take some space.
And you, you have the late start issue coming back around?
Second reading.
Yeah, that'll be, so do we, do we.
Totally fine bill.
Do we want to try and change finance or do we want to look for a different venue? I'm comfortable either way, so.
You think the library would be available?
Or we could try to change.
No, you can't change, no, you can't do that. No.
Go somewhere where they don't know where.
We don't know where that maybe is.
The 27th, Thursday.
Thank you.
I'll get back to you a little, but I think it's probably ill-advised for the chair and state here.
It would, it would also just be loud and it would be disruptive.
Annoying.
People standing in line outside.
Because you're parents, just like loud in voice, just no respect for anything else going on.
Okay.
All right, I'll come in, Kate, if we talk about.
Public comment?
Yep, public, yes.
Can I be comfortable?
Absolutely. Three minutes, I'm gonna put a timer on this.
Get it started.
I did, I got, when he initially said public comment, I hit start button.
Oh, time's up, thank you.
Like I said, I don't have any issues with anyone at the table except maybe one kind of board.
He's not here.
We just spoke up. Just a bunch of, several bullet points here in the budget. I mean, we had the goal of 3% or around 3%. So we had, had the initial reading and it came in way higher than that. So now it's a month or so later, I think there's been some direction at that time. And we talked about one pound on budget and the superintendent acknowledges that that is two-thirds of the budget. And the council seems to keep propping as if they're equal at 50, 50%, 50%. If not, it's two-thirds of the budget. So if they have to cut, it's gotta come from the elephant in the room. And I think, you know, it's not fair to the, the school board to wait for a second reading and then have to figure out how to cut to a percentage point. It sounds like today it would like to be in the 3% range, just three and a half percent. There's a long way to go. As Tom said, it's over $2 million. And so I think the council is remiss in not coming up with a number. And also, we talk about the, the school budget and, and what we need to spend in a minimum. But when we look at, at least the way it's reported in the paper, surrounding communities will look at the school budget and we'll see two, three, three and a half percentage point increase. And we're always seem to be much higher than that. So I think that's, that's a reality.
I guess that's about, one minute to spare, that was pretty good.
I left it for you, Chris.
Oh, awesome. Shall I go now? I get more than three minutes, though, that's, that's not fair. It's not affordable.
Well, I want to thank, I want to thank the superintendent with her tender look and she's come on board. And she's heard things that we would never possibly hear from our former board member, superintendent. Thank you, there.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you for staying engaged. Keep it up on us, keep it on our toes.
I asked Larry to stop into HR to fill out payroll information. A way you can make this all go away is since we've already put 2.1 on balances from the school side, if you just take two and a half, two and a half million from the town side, well, we've probably got some nice number, 3.5. Everyone can go home and ask for me.
Actually, I've, I've got a counterproposal from finance. We're gonna have targeted tax based on last, last letter, last name letter, and I think we're gonna start with age. I just want to propose a targeted tax increases if we could work something like that, that would be great.
I don't think you'll surprise the finance chair.
That's all right.
That's right.
I'm still putting it out there yesterday morning.
I'm still putting it out there.
You have to mention the state constitution, but, yeah, details, details.
All right, everybody, thank you. It's the weekend, right?
It is.